11:00 PM, Tuesday, April 17th. Calling this board meeting to order, roll call of directors, please.
Alice.
Here.
Barnes.
Here.
Hewitt.
Here.
Gorman.
Here.
Kaiser.
Here.
Carl Kramer.
Here.
Field.
Yes.
Tom Cech.
Hello.
Zerl.
Here.
And Stephen R. Carley.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Agenda item number three is the pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Item number four is the approval of the agenda. Should I see the approved as presented?
Okay.
There's a motion by Tom Cech, seconded by Carl Kramer, to approve the agenda as presented. Further discussion from the board. Are you none of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five is the approval of the minutes. There's two sets of board minutes, one from the regular Board of Education meeting on March 20th, 2018, then a second set from the special Board of Education on March 20th, 2018. That should play the approval as presented.
Okay.
There's a motion by Tom Cech, seconded by Kaiser, to approve both sets of minutes as presented. Further discussion from the board. Are you none of all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries as well. Item number six is the public forum. Public forum provides the public with the opportunity to ask questions about or address issues included on the school board meeting agenda. General operating rules of the public forum will be determined by the board president once the number of people wishing to speak is identified on the night of the meeting. Right to addressing the board, please clearly state your name and address, and also please clearly state the agenda item that you'll be speaking to. Is there anyone in the audience this evening that would like to address the board? Mr. Nowinski.
I'm Paul Nowinski.
I'll ask a second time, Mr. Nowinski. Would anyone else like to address the board?
None.
Okay. Mr. Kramer.
Melissa Karcher.
Name and address.
Melissa Karcher with a K, 502 Oakwood Court, Mozzany.
Okay.
Terry Odiva, 1522 South Rowan Mozzany.
Okay. And then Kramer.
Great Kramer, 2150 East Highway 153, Pepplin. I'm a paid up member of the Mozzany School District.
Okay.
Abby Tesh Larson, I'm employed for the WISD YMCA, running the program in Mozzany.
Okay, and that is swim?
Yes.
Swim, swim?
Swim, swim.
Mr. Kramer, the agenda item?
Under curriculum, I would just like to bring attention to that wonderful program the eighth graders had here on the Holocaust some time back. I'd just like to kind of highlight, there's so much negative stuff goes around the community about how bad you guys are, so I thought I'd highlight it a little bit tonight and bring out something positive students are doing.
All right, I see some thumbs up from the administrative team at the middle school. That's good. Mr. Nowinski, topic?
7B, athletic.
Okay.
Mozzany Athletic Annual Update.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, both of you, we'll do about three minutes. The vice president will handle the clock. You want to speak together or individually?
Sure, we'll speak together.
Okay.
Are we supposed to go up or just in here?
He'll give you a warning at about 30 seconds.
So you keep your...
We're getting a little morning.
I guess we were just here to support the, hopefully the decision to bring a swim team to the Mozzany Middle School and High School. And both of us have children that swim in the youth program. I have an older daughter as well, who's now 20. She swam in the youth program when she was young and about middle school, she wanted to do school sports, so she left the swim program and went into school sports, which really wasn't a good fit for her. The swim team would have been a much better fit. And our other children are kind of looking at having to make the same decisions so that they continue on with the school sports. And so, you know, for our kids, and I think for a lot of the kids within the community, even kids that aren't in the Y program, I hear from other parents that their kids are swimming at other locations. And so I think there's actually a lot of interest for the swim team, and it would be a very positive thing to bring to the Mozzany Schools.
And I'll, yeah, I'll support Melissa. I have two boys, one wholly starting to swim soon, but swimming is a lifetime sport, a lifetime skill to have. I mean, it saves lives, it saves, you know, so to have that, not a ball, you know, this is an individual and yet a team sport, and for my kids, they thrive on it, they love it. You know, we get to use the Mozzany pool, which is a great asset to the community, and it can bring the community in to say, hey, we can come watch these classmates and our friends swim. What a great thing for the community to have. You know, I know it doesn't, you know, like I said, like Melissa said, I have two boys that they just, they're in the pool. I mean, they're in the pool once or twice a week, even when swimming's not in session with the youth program because they want to be there and they want to get better, and I think it would be a great asset, um, as an athletic sport for the Mozzany School District.
One other thought real quick is just in this era where everybody is so aware and focused when it comes to sports and concussions, swim team is a sport that is, you know, much safer in those regards. It's just, it's a very healthy sport, it's just the, it's something that children can take and carry on all the way through their adult lives. You don't have a lot of the, you know, of course you're going to have some injuries, but you just, you don't have a lot of the injuries that way that you do in other sports. So I just think it's a very healthy sport and would really like to see it come into the Mozzany School District.
Thank you.
And what I would have to add to that is looking at it from a staffing perspective. This community has already the biggest asset to have a pool and have an aquatic community, and it's your pool, it's phenomenal and beautiful. And so I get a lot of questioning, why isn't there a team when you have this great asset? Which is something to consider. And the other thing is for staffing, one of my biggest struggles here has been staffing lifeguards and swim instructors. And honestly, downtown and Weston, a majority of those swim instructors are people who are on the swim team and kind of carry that love for the sport. So you're going to see a lot less cancellations. I had to cancel two classes just not having enough instructors last session, so hopefully that will carry that love of swimming all the way through high school with the kids. The other thing is I don't see a lot of different opportunities. You've got basketball and these other sports, but like I said, you have the best part of being able to have the swim team with the pool. So adding, you know, the coaching and all of that is minimal compared to having that. So I think it would just be another opportunity for the kids. I know when DC Everest started their boys team, it was really just a few boys that went up to one of their teachers who they knew was a swim coach and said, hey, we're looking for something to do outside of our football season that's going to keep us from getting hurt, it's going to work different muscles, and that's also a great thing for the other coaches in other sports to look at swimming as a way to cross train. And then beyond that, just the life-saving skills, like the number of lifeguards you have in this community would be, you know, greatly increased, and that's going to be beneficial to everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Kramer?
Well, back at the Kreske Center, eighth grader had a program on the Holocaust, and I really have to congratulate the staff and the eighth graders, and I'll start out with their Albert Einstein. They had this little setup all over the Kreske Gym, and they really went into detail. They had to do a lot of research and it all made a lot of sense, and they were really enthused about it. As an example, Albert Einstein and how he wiggled over here and how he sat down with FDR and the President, they had to put him in jail because he was a Nazi, of course, Nazi Germany, right? And of course, there you see on his little table, E equals MC squared, I mean, they didn't leave that out, and they had a little quote here, so they went like, this year we can't be destroyed by those who do evil, but maybe those that don't do anything are worse. I mean, maybe, you know, we just don't have the ump sometimes to do something about something that's evil. And then, you know, they had all this other stuff, weapons, I mean, M1. And lo and behold, they machined out Brady's stuff over here apart for the M1 transfer magazine ammunition to the block, you know, and they were so proud, they had those three parts or something, they showed me how to operate it, and I'm like, boy, here you've got these young eighth graders, and when I think, when I think back when I was an eighth grader, all I knew how to do was mow cows and pick stones, I mean, and here these young kids, and of course Brady, we got him here, you know, shotgunning and all that, but then now, again, I have to thank the staff. For gambling, you know, if you tried to pull this thing on a college campus now, you'd never get away with it. They'd shut it down. You wouldn't even get permission to do it. But here we got a slow Mozzany over here, I think it represents the culture. I really, it's all, even, you know, even blown way down to Dancy down there, they got some of that Dancy culture in them, you know. But with that being said, you know, they even showed the propaganda that took place during, on both sides, you know, fake news, you know, and they really got, they really got into it. I have, you know, those kids, they had, they did a heck of a job. And killing camps, and then one thing I really, they showed where they actually starved the people, they didn't just burn them up in furnaces, they actually starved them to death. Imagine that, I mean, just her and us, you know. And here again, I like to kind of stress the positive of the Mozzany School District. I think we're just lucky that we live in Mozzany School District. I see migration here from Wassa continuously coming down here with our leaders, and they don't want to leave. And we even got one here from Edgar, he don't want to go back to Edgar, he wants to stay. So anyhow, thank you.
Mr. Nowinski?
It's going to be hard to top the Dancy culture, I know that. I'm just here to talk about...
You're close there.
I'm just here to talk a little bit about athletics. I think our athletic director is going to give you a presentation or anything, but I just want to make sure you understand that athletics are only less than 3% of our budget. There are over 600 kids that are involved in athletics, and hopefully we'll have a swim team eventually, but kids that are active, have better GPAs, they have better attendance, they have positive experiences, I just hate to see anything happen to our athletics. I know budgets are issues, and I know people are talking about cutting things like that, and school safety is a big issue, I understand that it should be, but I would really hate to see us take a step back with what we're doing with our athletic programs. Thank you.
On agenda item number seven, which is special presentations, recognition of school board members and student board representative.
Well, tonight's class, I've given it after 15 years, 15 years, so we want to thank you. So we have a little plaque, we have a, I should really have Paul do this, Paul does this at our stand for teachers and every, he teaches people what to do, right, like, oh...
That would be a violation of the...
Oh, that's true.
...form, and I cannot do that.
He goes, oh, there we go, oh, look at that, so there's, we thank you for your service, yep, and we have a plaque for you, and we also have a certificate from WESB. But a president has a special role, especially with a superintendent, and trust me, there's a lot of guidance as a new superintendent that those of you that have served as a president have helped me become a better superintendent, so I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
And Carley, for your service for a year, this is your last, if you want to join us during the summer, you know, feel free to do that, but thank you very much, and we appreciate the service and the voice, you bringing the voice of the kids to the table.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
If you want to sit on the floor, please.
Yeah, it's awesome.
Thank you.
We have a nice little cake for you afterwards, okay?
Rum?
Rum cake.
The next special presentation, item 7B, is on Mozzany Athletics, it's an annual update. Seth?
Thank you. Welcome everyone, thank you for having me. Mozzany Athletics, lead chap of 1718. Roles and responsibilities, so looking at athletics, we've got roughly 700 plus events per year, nearly 300 that we host here in the Mozzany community. Along with each year, we have different bids for playoff hosting, so we're contracted as a WIAA playoff site. We put in for those bids, and often depending on where things fall, we get to host those sites. So for this year, we actually get to host the regional golf meet, we get to host regional track meet, we hosted the GMC conference meet for volleyball, and sectional, we were a sectional host for volleyball as well, so just a great opportunity, great atmosphere if you've been at any of those events. Looking at staffing and scheduling, there's a lot of moving pieces behind the scenes, 400 plus officials over the course of the year, 700 plus event staff positions, we've got 90 plus contracts between fitness center, middle schools, high school assistant head coaches. And honestly, the climate of coaching is, we're at about probably one applicant, averaging one applicant per vacancy, that means it's one to two, maybe zero, so, you know, it's a tough, it's a tough, it's a tough dynamic to work with, but having those relationships, being diligent recruiting helps fill those roles with the best quality candidate that we can, and then all the blessing as well. Looking at WIA, we are governed by the WIA, so there's very specific rules, regulations, and processes, those are constantly evolving throughout the school year, so we're reviewing those, there's meetings, there's policies, there's updates, eligibility of students, we have certain waiver criteria for transferring students or foreign exchange, and then also networking with other athletic directors to work on new initiatives, implementing professional roles and other development strategies. Facilities, we've got, we schedule just about all our facilities, gyms, fields, classrooms, we work with Joe to schedule the auditorium, we've got the staffing of the strength and fitness center, we have quality control of all our facilities, that goes with scoreboards, sound, we work with the tech department at Brady, they're always incredible, custodial and Steve and Dan Dahl, they're exceptional, so we've just got a great team that comes together and is able to keep things working at a high, high level. We work with YMCA, Abby is the pool director, she does phenomenal work, and then also building a relationship with our city council, Parks and Rec, as we foster, Rec Center has an alternative site for athletic practices, summer school, and potential PE classes this spring and summer. Reservations, so one of the primary issues with athletics is the demand on our gym space, especially now with the spring, we have countless youth softball, youth baseball teams along with all of our athletics that are just striving for any bit of gym space that they can, so our gyms are maximized, and we're grateful to the city for opening up the Rec Center, that's allowed our soccer teams to practice over there along with some of our youth teams. So we've got a transparent reservation process for that, same for our MCA turf field. Looking at the athletic budget, we've got roughly 600 student athletes, that's total athletes involved, that's not including the multi-sport athletes, we're well over 1,000 if you're including each sport participated in. So you see the breakdown of the budget, we've got high school, middle school, travel, and then salaries. You know, context into that is that there's a relatively high demand on our booster clubs to sustain and support our athletic program, so you remove those booster clubs and you'd have a lot of struggling, a lot of sports that would struggle to function at a basic level, so.
Zach, those 600 students, does that, are we talking fourth grade when you started getting into fourth grade basketball programs or programs, or what timeframe, in terms of percentage of student body, what percentage of student body represent?
I'd have to, I'd have to go back and look, so it's scaled because at the middle school, we only count school-sponsored athletics, so you've got nine through 12 at high school, and then for middle school athletics, we only have certain sports that are scaled down to middle school, and that may be only seven, eight, or that may be six through eight, depending on. And it's like softball, baseball, all that's done through the youth, so we don't, none of our athletes are directly in college or participating in that. So I can certainly get a more detailed breakdown on that, but great question.
Looks like it's about half to me, but I think it's a little stronger than half, I'm just curious.
Yep, yeah, in middle school, we only, we're scattered with what we offer at the middle school level, a lot of that absorbed in the youth, so a lot of that cost is absorbed by our youth organization as well. GPA, so you just see a contrast between the student athlete, and this is pretty consistent amongst other schools as well. There's just, you know, noticing from my own observations, reviewing grade reports, you'll even have a student who may only be in a winter sport, they're getting apps in the fall and the spring, but when it comes to winter, they're not on that report, so it's just a huge incentive for athletes to perform and for athletes to be at school, and those are two things that we really appreciate and value that athletics help reinforce. Segwaying into the pool operating costs, you'll see the breakdown for the pool operation, you know, I don't know if Brent has more insight into how Fund 80 ties into that, covering that cost, but as Abby has mentioned, and Melissa and Terry did as well, is looking at the swim culture and just that the primary cost is there, is already accounted for. So looking at increasing opportunities for students, this wouldn't necessarily be, oh, well, if we would implement these opportunities, other sports would suffer, you're just targeting different types of students that normally wouldn't be in your standard sport, and that's the goal, is to get every student involved in something beyond the school day, where they're being mentored, they're learning life lessons, they're being poured into, so we've had that, the evolution of the curling club, the addition of the trap club as affiliated, and looking at the potential for building, building something around swim as well. Along with the budget, we've got pretty standard operating budget, we've got our accounts overseeing that, delegating that. Meetings, as you can see, just a lot of meetings, especially now, more emergency meetings around scheduling and trying to meet conference requirements for getting in events. Just some other opportunities that I've been very fortunate to be a part of was invited to the Wisconsin Athletic Directors Association Strategic Planning Committee this past winter, also attending the National Athletic Directors Conference this past year, and yearly attending our state conference, so it's a great opportunity to network and grow from some of the best in the area of athletics. Just some general data, as you can see, we've got year-to-year athletic ticket revenue, there's some different variables that go into that, it may depend on home and away schedules as they flip-flop, what site, what events we're able to post for playoffs for WIA, and then also, you know, we've also made a push for, you know, seniors and making events more accessible to our staff and our students, so it kind of bounces around year to year. Participation and fees, as you can see, we're sustaining a high participation in athletics.
Are we, are we increasing fees? I don't recall, are we just seeing a student involvement grow, it's really too poor. You have more kids involved and fees are increasing.
Athletic and coaching supervisor contracts, same thing, you know, we've, part of that number jumping is how we've broken down and segmented our fitness center coverage contracts, and the reason we did that was to make it more accessible for our coaches or our staff to take those contracts throughout the year. Total athletic events, we look at every opportunity we can to maximize, you know, one variable is obviously cancellations like you'd see with the spring, but we're constantly looking for invites, tournaments, and different events that we can develop to bring teams here, bring people here to Mozzany, as that has secondary benefits of local business and just overall recognition and notoriety of our community. Home events as well, we really try to accelerate our hosting. Strength and conditioning, that's really been a big push behind the scenes, it's often not recognized for the great effect that it has, but if you look at other school districts and other athletic programs, it's definitely a very foundational piece to having students be, I guess, be set up for injury prevention and overall lifelong health. This is our weekly coverage, as you can see, we've been able to have greater hours and expansion for the fitness center. This was just a general article with someone referencing Mozzany and their format and how they, how they make the fitness center accessible to their community. Summer school, we have kind of a...
Do you want to just stop and talk about the changes in the fitness center?
Sure, yeah, I would love to.
As long as it's here as well.
And I'll get to that.
Okay, you're going to get to that one.
Yep, so this is just kind of the summer school, and if you want more information on that, we're actually going to be switching over to the Rec Center, that's going to be our whole cycle of summer school, really excited about that. We've got, I've got Coach Kirk Van Hoogel here, he's in the best of the rest leagues, he's been doing incredible work, leading our strength and conditioning department along with, you know, Paul's definitely a big piece of that, and we've had some other teachers and coaches helping with that as well. But to speak to Ann's point, we solved many issues a few years ago when we moved the weight room down to the, what's deemed the old gym, we had students that were lifting in the hallway, running in the hallway, and working out in the hallway, in a very highly trafficked hallway, which was right, essentially the Kreske lobby, the Kreske Center. This is a very isolated dead hallway, which is definitely a pro, but as you can see, we still have issues with overflow in space, so we've got, we've got teams that are working out in the hall. This is a sample, this is a photo taken from Miss Coach Van Hoogel's class, where you can see athletes warming up and doing exercises in the classroom, in the teaching space, around the machines, because the machines are not a, I shouldn't say that, certain machines are duplicates of what we already have and are not part of the curriculum. So you have a consolidation, you've got a lot of redundancy in that room that's taking up what could be more valuable teaching space. And the emphasis of the teaching curriculum is for our students to be proficient in 3D movement rather than 2D movement, which would be sitting on a machine, which often contributes to imbalances and puts them at a greater risk for injury at times. Not saying they're completely negate, but... So with some of these challenges, space, exercise selection stations, we've looked at the potential of reformatting, reformatting the room and what that would look like as a physical education space. So one component of that would have been, could potentially be a dynamic training rig, which gives you eight stations, there's a lot of versatility to that as a teaching component, both for the high school students and for the middle school students. The second component of that would be is instead of having kids working, warming up around machines, now there's a designated area down the middle, which would be essentially turf, and as you can see in the photos above, we have students on the ramps, we have certain exercises that are done in the gym on the opposite end of the school, because we do not have any open space in that essentially physical education teaching space to meet the demands of the curriculum. And I don't know, Kirk, if there was anything you wanted to kind of speak to on that in regards to what obstacles you see from a curriculum component and what maybe your other colleagues in FIAID see?
I think the main thing that you hit on was the redundancy of the machines that are in there. I think when you look at it as trying to get the biggest bang for your buck, we're looking at, okay, what machines are not being utilized, when we sat down as a FIAID department, what machines are not being utilized, and then just using that to decide, okay, what's more important, that machine or that space? And when we kind of look at it as, with the machines that are in there, the space that they take up, that's allowed for one person to do something in, whereas you open up the space, you have two to three people that you could be moving around, so it was kind of that, that back and forth, and we've been going on this since the beginning of the year of making sure that... looking at, okay, what machines are not being utilized? A, when we sat down as a FIA department, what machines are not being utilized? And then just using that to decide, okay, what's more important, that machine or that space? And when we kind of look at it as with the machines that are in there, the space that they take up, that's allowed for one person to do something in, whereas you open up the space, you have two to three people that you could be moving around. So it, it was kind of that, that back and forth, and we've been going on this since the beginning of the year of making sure that we're not, we're not eliminating something that could be of potential use later on, because we know that once you get rid of something, is, is it going to come back? So it's, it's taking into consideration on what's redundant in there, and what are the things that we can do in the space provided if, if we, if we maximize what we have in that room, so.
So hypothetically, if, if certain machines were taken out of that room and someone was used to using those, how, how would they, what would they know to do in replace, in place of that?
And that, and that was the big thing, is the knowledge part of it, is if any change that we're going to create, there's going to be a knowledge component, where I've, I volunteered my time, where I would be more than happy to set up any type of sessions, to have a walkthrough, to have an open house for community members to go through and explore the new types of things that are in there and how it can help them with their lifestyles, because that's kind of the overall goal of the new space is movement. And I think with quality movement and, and using your body as a tool is actually going to help improve fitness as opposed to using a machine that you're sitting on and, and negating one, one joint. So it would, it was, it's definitely open conversation. I've, I've, I'm more than happy to have different types of activities, not to mention that with that space, you can actually have different types of cardio machines where you can incorporate spin classes, zumba. I mean, if you look at, when you're looking at YMCA type stuff, this is stuff that can be implemented inside during community hours as well.
The only question I'm going to put out there is, we have this committee called the Curriculum Committee.
Yep.
Why wouldn't that have been also run through that committee and discussed at that level? I mean, it seems like we have these committees and, and we do all this stuff, and this is why you might get some calls, and I talked to Ann about this room in particular, and she knows why this room is a sore spot for me. And it's not because of the fitness equipment, it's because of what it was previously. So, I mean, that's what I'd like to see a little bit more, if you want to get it out there, you know, run it through these types of, I mean, we have this person, he was Julie? Yeah. So it'd be nice to involve these type of people in these types of decisions as well, if it is indeed part of the curriculum and a classroom instruction.
Sure, all the teachers have been involved. Julie, have they been curriculum mapping?
Oh, yeah. Definitely. Maybe that's been the curriculum that they're...
Am I allowed to say something? I want to break the form rules, but the, the biggest thing that you've seen, and I've been fortunate enough to go to thirty-seven different universities, is the way you train has changed drastically, especially in the last ten, fifteen years. Full-body movements are more of what people are doing, even people that they would say are elderly like me. Restricted movements are not things that are going to give you much benefit, and that's what you see a lot of those machines doing. So even though they feel safe with them, the real benefit to them is not that great. And I can show you all kinds of research on that, that's just my bother. And I think that's what our FIA department's doing, they're moving to the latest research of what other people are doing.
In, in good or bad, I mean, I, I get emails probably every other week about schools or places that are getting rid of the fixed...